Councilman Schlack, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
It'll be an honor, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba.
Here.
Councilwoman Doitt.
Here.
Councilman Slackta.
Here.
Mayor Simmons.
Here.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Councilman Gibson.
Here.
Councilman Forch.
Here.
Good morning, everybody. How are you?
Good morning, Mayor.
Welcome. Would you like to get us kicked off here, please?
Sure. Good morning. Alex Boswell-Ebersole, Assistant City Attorney, for the record. I'll just get us rolling here. This is a second reading of the following ordinance, PD 16-31234BOS, Benita Breeze Commercial Plan Development District III. A zoning ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida considering our request by TriStar Management Service LLC to rezone 1.79 acres from C1 commercial to commercial plan development, PD, for a maximum of 22,000 square feet of self-storage located at 4276 Benita Beach Road Southwest and 27696 Okeana Street, Benita Springs, Florida, providing for an effective date. I have read the affidavit of publication and found it legally sufficient. I know we have the applicants here and then we have staff with the applicants presenting first. The applicants, I know there's a Greg Stewart, and he's previously been tendered as an expert in front of this body in...
Land use and planning?
In land use and planning. I don't know if there's others. We can tender them if necessary. We also have for staff, we have Jacqueline Genson. She's been tendered in front of this entity for, as an expert in land use and planning as well. And with that, I'll let the applicant begin.
Okay.
Unless there's any members of the public who are gonna wish to speak, I can go ahead and swear them in now as well. Okay, well, we can have everybody sworn in then. If everybody would please raise their right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I just...
Thank you.
Or nothing but the truth, huh? Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor. Phil, the council members, Greg Stewart. I'm presenting on behalf of Al Katron, Katron and Associates. I've been working with Al on this project.
Microphone.
I'm work-- is that better? There you go. I'm working with Al Katron. He's sitting in the back. He doesn't want to speak. He's very shy this morning. But if there are questions about engineering and drainage and surface water management, you know, we'll bring Al up to testify. And then Jolene Dars, the architect. And I believe Jolene was not only sworn in, but her credentials and qualifications in architecture were tendered as an expert, so we won't have to go through that again.
No, she's been tendered in front of this body before, and I understand that she has.
Okay. Again, I want to thank Jackie, Mike, Jay, John. A lot of staff members were involved for many, many, many months on this project. They did a really good job in helping us and helping the project and guiding it through the process. The project basically is a very simple one. We're taking a C1 conventional zoning district and requesting a commercial plan development for 22,000, 22,000 square feet of luxury condominium self-storage units. This is not a mini warehouse project. Mini warehouse projects typically, you know, range from 60,000, 80,000 square feet. They typically have units 10 feet wide by 15 feet depth or 10 feet by 20. Small units, they're for rental. They usually have a low, a low-quality architecture, low-quality environmental design. And again, they're rental. This project is very small, 1.7 acres, 22,000 square feet, very high-end, very limited also, 25 total units. The typical units will be 40 feet in-depth to 45 feet in-depth, about 20 feet in width. The units will be air-conditioned, Wi-Fi enabled. Basically, the project is, is a, is an off-site accessory garage project. It'll be used for people that want to buy units to, if they're into antique cars or sports cars or something, to provide storage for those types of automobiles, RVs, boats. Also, if they're into woodworking, for example, or artists as a painting studio. So these, these garages are, in fact, very unique and there's, and staff work really hard with us because this is kind of an, it's a different niche. So technically, we are asking for a self-storage mini warehouse, but in fact, it's not. We agree with the report, staff report. The only issue is 6B, and at the end of the presentation, I'll get into that, but we agree with staff. We find that we meet all the standards that are embedded in the land development code. The uses themselves are very limited, self-storage mini warehouse, administrative for, administrative offices for the management and function and sales of the facility, entrance gate, parking lot, those types of accessory uses. So it's very site-specific. We agree with both staff and the planning commission. Not only do we meet the criteria, but the deviations are appropriate, so we're in sync with that. Excuse me. We meet the zoning entitlement standards in the staff report, page 22, 23. They elaborate on that. I would like to say that when you look at the staff report and page 13, 16, how this ties into both the comprehensive plan and the land development code, you know, when you look at the height, we're a single-story. We're consistent with future commercial land use, transportation, resource protection. The, if it's pending or if they actually implemented the BBR visioning rules, I'm not sure where you are on that, but we're consistent with that, whether they have or have not been adopted. When you look at performance standard criteria, we exceed almost all the performance standards, from building coverage, which the standard's 40%, we're at 28%. Open space by code, again, this is a small project, but we're required to have .36 acres of open space. We have .72 acres of open space. Those are good examples. Landscaping, as I'll get into, we exceed those standards. So we, we meet, we meet that criteria. When you look at the densities and intensities up and down Benita Beach Road, we're consistent with what's going on. I mean, just look immediately to the west at Benita Oaks Square. It's a retail plaza. They're at 21,880 square feet. We're at 22,000. Again, as an example, we fit in well with this particular segment of the Benita Beach Road corridor. As I pointed out, not only are we compatible from a height perspective, again, it's a single-story facility. If you look at staff report, page nine, I quote, "This type of use is typically low-traffic generations and low-traffic generators and quiet neighbors," which is true. I mean, this isn't an office complex where you have people coming and going. You know, you typically have people coming in, using the facility, leaving. It's very low-impact. It's highly compatible. When you look at the infrastructure burdens, especially traffic on Benita Beach Road, our TIS shows that there'll be, at peak, P, which is, the PM is the peak, not the AM, we're having six projected new trips, 55 total trips per day. Quite frankly, those are overestimates, and the reason being is that it's based on a self-storage facility, which, again, this really isn't. But even if you use that standard, we're really low on that. From an environmental perspective, as the air photo shows, basically, half the site has been demoed. It's the old car wash. So you have this, you know, you have a demolished site on the south, and then on the northern component, it's an urban open lands flux 17-211 category. So this area has been disturbed. You do have scattered oaks, pine, a few cabbage palms, preserving a bunch of trees. I'll get into that. So we're not adversely impacting any environmental considerations. So again, when you look at the criteria in front of you, with the exception of 6B, the, the conditions that staff is recommending and that we agree with are applicable. They, they tie into the program. The conditions fit well, and we agree with them, again, with the except, with the exception of 6B. So, so when you look at the project, using the Benita Beach Road Visioning Plan, we're in the beach zone. You can see it on, on the site. We have approximately, out of the 1.79 acre site, you know, .44 acres are in easements. The Vanda Drive easement, the Benita Springs utility easement to the east of the property. It's located next to Taco Mix Restaurant, which I'll highly endorse. I really like Taco Mix Restaurant. It's, so it's almost on the corner. We have a driveway connection onto Benita Beach Road. Existing now, there is an access easement that, that ties into the east adjoining property. So we already have a shared access easement. We'll be expanding that access easement. I'll elaborate on that. Again, general commercial with C1 zoning. And then again, you have slat, you have scattered slash pines, some oaks, cabbage palms, that type of thing. Then finally, with regard to utilities, yeah, Benita Springs Utilities has central water and sanitary sewer to serve the site.
Good morning. My name is Jolene Dara, for the record, and I'm the architect on this project. So I just wanted to introduce you to the neighborhood where our site is located. Can you hear me okay? This is Benita Beach Road on the north side, and our site is right here in the former car wash site. Our neighborhood is, is, where this project is going is eclectic architecturally. There are a lot of different styles, a lot of buildings with, with kind of no style. They're kind of low-slung with large overhangs. We do have some examples of old Florida architecture in the area, most notably to the west of the site with the condominium village directly to the west. So, let's see. The condominium village, you see here, we have a hotel directly to the west also, two-story hotel. We have along the back, Okeana Street and Vanda Drive, there are residential homes in the area and also duplexes. Styles, again, nondescript, but colors, nice bright pastel colors all around the neighborhood. Users in the area are residential. There are tourists that stay at the hotel and the condominiums, and then also long-term residents in the neighborhood. Some of the positive features that we find in the neighborhood, in order to, to have a dialogue with our architecture that we're creating, are some of the horizontal siding that you find on the examples of, excuse me, old Florida architecture and Victorian architecture. Here, we have the framed windows, large overhangs, again, horizontal siding, and some of the peaked roof forms that we found to use, use with our style that we were, were going to develop. Let's see if we have pages. And then immediately around the site, we have the Taco Mix store and restaurant that Greg mentioned. And, let's see, again, across the site looking to the southwest, and the homes along the street to the north of our site. Let's see what's next here. Do you want me to go ahead and start with this? Okay. So the significance of our site, we feel, is that, is its role as a gateway to the beach. This is going to be the first project sort of in the beach zone along the visioning plan of Benita Beach Road. So we felt that it would be a precedent for future development in this area. And as a gateway, so as a gateway, we, we developed the tower feature along the corner here to create a sense of welcome and arrival to the area as residents and tourists alike are on their way to the beach.
Branding, perhaps.
Huh?
Branding, perhaps.
Branding.
Interesting design.
Thank you. And also, the tower feature gives a sense of welcome to the site as well for people using the project as we located it next to the driveway there, as people come in and around. We took extra care to create an architecture that would fit into the neighborhood with, we used the elements that we found, the horizontal siding, the articulated banding at the top of our parapet, and we did bring in a peaked roof form for that tower feature, also using brackets that are found in the old Florida and Key West-type architecture, framed windows, Bahamas shutters to create shadow lines also along here, and then banding that creates horizontal shadow lines as well, as well as some decorative features along the parapet. And I think for now, that's good. I'll be back later.
Yeah. So some of the attributes, in addition to the gateway, again, there are 25 high-end accessory garages, if you will. It'll fit in well from our marketing studies with the demand that you have with a lot of the high-end, mid and high-rise communities that Benita Springs is known for. Certainly, we are implementing the Benita Beach Road Visioning Plan, the beach zone. We're putting in a 30-foot buffer, an eight-foot multi-use path, those types of things. There'll be a lot of, a lot more discussion on what we're doing to implement that, but we are implementing it, and we're very proud of that. We're preserving 12 native pines, oaks and palms, including a 22-inch heritage, heritage pine. We have presented in front of the tree preservation board. They like the project, so they've endorsed it. And again, of course, the record shows that the planning commission has endorsed it. Now, I know this is rather small, but this does increase your tax base sixfold. It's a small site, but, you know, I'm estimating your, the actual taxes that go into the city coffers at $1,731 to $6,292. So you get a little bump on the tax base, which is a good thing. And the project advances interconnectivity both to the west and to the east. Speaking of interconnectivity, the graphic shows what we're trying to do. You, you have four, you have four buildings on the project. The longest is 180 feet. That's the east building along Benita Beach Road. It's an 80-foot building. So, you know, it's relatively small buildings. When you look at the interconnectivity, we are proposing to expand the cross-access easement that currently exists at Benita Beach Road. Right now, it's more like a 40-by-40 box. We're expanding that to the north to allow for a little bit greater depth in stacking. Jackie's telling me about the proposed hotel project coming up. So you have interconnectivity here. Of course, with what we're doing with the multi-use bike path, you know, this is, this is a nice little segment to kick off that, that aspect of the visioning plan. So you have pedestrian and bike interconnectivity. And then Vanda Drive will be expanding the easement to the east line. And again, Vanda Drive could end up being a very significant cross-access. He's been tying into what's proposed to the east. It's, it's adequately stacked in terms of where Benita Beach Road and Okeana is. So here are some elements of the, of the interconnectivity that we're working hard on. And again, this ties into condition 6, 6B. In terms of tree preservation, this graphic is what we use to show the tree preservation board. It shows some of the trees that are, that are being preserved along Okeana. It's interesting that we're, we're picking up a, a number of large pine trees. Here's the heritage pine. And so what we're doing is undulating the buffer to pick up those large pine trees, and that'll really help, help buffering along Okeana. And then the dash, you know, the dash circles show the, the trees that we have surveyed that are being impacted. We're also picking up a sable, a sable palm here. Yeah, with regard to the visioning plan, you know, I mentioned earlier, we're doing a 30-foot buffer from Benita Beach Road. The plan, basically, if you follow the, the plan graphic or the cross-section, we'll be doing almost two times the amount of landscaping that the code calls for. And the concept is to have an undulating, a tall shrub buffer with canopy trees between the existing sidewalk and the project. And then you have the multi-use bike path right here. And then you have more landscape trees that are planted in clusters. The, you know, the specifications are in the, in the report, but in, in general, what we're doing is, let me see, it's, we are doing 80 to, we're probably going to end up with 80 to 90 shrubs that, that, that tie into the bike path, and then additional shrubs along the building, you know, because that's part of the code, tree clustering, that type of thing. We're putting a street furnisher, street furnishing here, specifically a bench. And then in terms of the bus stop, we'll be improving that bus stop, you know, roofing it, bike, you know, bu, you know, bike rack, that type of thing, and also landscaping around it. So, so again, what we're trying to do is, is to implement your, your vision and, and kicking it off. And then finally, you see, the, we're going with a smaller monument sign. The code allows for a larger monument sign, but we're saying, and we don't, you know, as you, as you pointed out, council members, you know, the building itself will be a part of the advertisement, so we don't need a larger monument sign. So we're, so again, we're trying to do something on the visual streetscaping, landscaping, and urban design to, to help implement your vision. The buffering plan is, is complicated because you have different, you have different uses and contexts. To start off on the east side, because you have a BSU easement, you know, we can't plant in the easement. So what we did is, at, at staff's encouragement, we offset the building, and then allow, and that will allow for a perimeter buffering to be actually close to the building. By our estimate, we're looking at probably three 20-foot-long shrub clusters and approximately eight trees along, you know, a lot, within 10 feet of the building. And that keeps it out of BSU and make sure that the, the maintenance of those trees and landscaping will be, will be going forward without, you know, any automobiles coming in and tearing it up. On the north side, we have a two-code, 25-foot type F, five trees per 100 linear foot, and a double hedge. And by, by our preliminary landscape plan estimates, we're looking at probably two additional trees. And right here is the service dumpster area, so we'll probably put the two additional trees there. Along, along this, the north building, instead of a, and again, the code calls for a 25-foot buffer, we asked for a deviation, which staff has agreed, to knock that down to 15 feet, but still keeping the same, the same planting standards, five trees and a double hedge, no wall, that type of thing. You also have, with the 15-foot, you have a 40-foot separation between the two duplexes here. So, you know, it, it works well. Along Okeana, we're going with a varied 15, 20-foot buffer, again, picking up a few, a few large pines. There's the heritage pine. Also putting a double hedge on a low berm along the shared boundary with Taco Mix, a type A buffer, and we're picking up a sable palm here. And as I pointed out, the Benita Beach Road buffer, we're a six trees per 100 double hedge on a, on a low berm. So the buffering plan's varied, and it's contextually specific. The graphics show, you know, from a cross-sectional perspective, how this works on Okeana. In addition to having the low berm and the trees and all that, we're putting a screening wall in, if I can back off, right here. Okay. The graphic, the, the plan graphic doesn't show up, but there'll be a screening wall here. So you're not, so you're looking at architectural and screening wall. You're not looking down the throat of a parking lot. And then on Vanda, what we're also doing is, if we have room in the budget, what we'd want to do is to have optional plantings on the north side of Vanda to help create a gateway, and it's just a better entrance, as, as Jolene showed with the pictures. I mean, you know, the, the duplexes aren't anything specific to look at, so by having extra landscaping, it'll serve our purpose, but also create better, better buffering. So that's an optional thing I wanted to point out, and hopefully, we will have the money to do it. In terms of the master concept plan, the deviations, just to go through very quickly, deviation one is a stacking deviation. Here you have a gate. We're asking for a stacking deviation, 46 feet, basically, from there to, to Vanda. And the reason why staff is, is recommending approval is that we still have Vanda, which is basically a private roadway being used by two units here. The duplex here has access to Okeana. So, you know, you've got a huge stacking capability on Vanda. Deviation two, again, instead 25 feet, 15 feet, I explained that, and we have great separation, and we're still meeting the code landscaping requirement. 3A and 3B pertain to access connection separations, and they are based upon the existing conditions. 3A, Benita Beach Road and the driveway to the Taco Mix driveway, and then 3B is the 97 feet to the Benita Beach Walk Drive, which is right around here. So those reflect existing conditions. So they're very technical. Deviation wall, the, the street, street stub deviation, they're granting that, and that ties into condition 6B, which I'll get into shortly. And then finally, deviation five, which the code requires a, it's a four-foot berm, Jackie? I think it's a four-foot berm for self-storage. And with what the city council's trying to do with Benita Beach Road, having a four-foot berm, one, you don't have enough space for it. You'd rather have the multi-use. So what we're doing is saying, we'll put a one-to-two-foot undulating berm, both on Benita Beach Road, and the same thing, one-to-two-foot berm with the hedge on top and the trees on top along Okeana. That way, you can preserve the trees here, and then that way, you could have your, your eight-foot multi-use path. So I think everyone's on board with that. As I, as I said at the beginning, you know, we're general commercial, you know, the projects are right there. We're consistent with the various policies and goals in general commercial. I would like to point out, because we are C1, we're, C1 allows for all types of uses, auto repair, gas convenience, fast food restaurants. I mean, a lot of uses that I understand, following the city council and the city for all these years, you know, you don't want these types of really heavy-duty automobile-related uses on Benita Beach Road. So we're getting rid of them, yet the project is a commercial project, so we're consistent, you know, with that standard. When you look at city, a city visual appearance, 1-3, as, as Jolene started to get into, and she'll elaborate more specifically, between the architecture and the landscape and the environmental design, we think that we're doing a really good job on that. Staff agrees with that. Your planning commission agrees with that. We're compatible. If you look at staff report on page nine, they point out that this, again, is a quiet, low-impact use, and that, and so that enhances compatibility. And then, of course, with the buffering and the single-story buildings. So we're compatible 1-4. Getting into the Benita Beach Road corridor, we, you know, we're, we're doing everything to implement and be consistent with, with your architectural standards and your visioning plan unto itself. And then finally, the plans, the architectural design is, is compliant with your new code standards, which is 490B. So we meet those, and actually, as Jolene will explain, we're exceeding your newly adopted design standards. Then when you look at transportation, again, tying back into the Benita Beach Road Visioning Plan, multimodal, having pedestrian and bikes, we're, we're doing that. Having pedestrian scale, we're doing that. Cross-access interconnectivity, you know, policy 2.2.6, you know, we're, we're consistent with that. The complete street design principles, certainly the whole project really ended up resolving around that, because we had to start with Benita Beach Road and then go in. So, so that was the foundation of the project. We ended up, and as the staff will do their presentation, I mean, we did many iterations, site planning, to get to where we are now, but it all ties back into your vision for Benita Beach Road. And then conservation policy 724, again, we're doing a decent job in preserving existing trees. I think in your packet, there is a draft copy of our project covenants. We've provided them, just to grant assurance to, to your staff and, and to council on how this thing will operate. No commercial businesses, can't use that as residence, outdoor storage is prohibited, major repairs are prohibited, excessive noise is prohibited. So... So we provided the draft, and you can go into that. Uh, the final draft, of course, will be if you approve the project, which I hope you will, um, you know, during the development order stage, that's when the final draft will get approved. But we want, we wanted to submit that because there are internal mechanisms that you just don't have in a normal rental-type facility. Again, this is a high-end condominium, so the, the same type of restrictions that you would have at, you know, Pelican Landing, you know, you, you're going to have here. And with that, Jolene.
Okay, so to, you'll get a little more specific on the architecture. Um, our main goal was to create a cohesive architectural language all the way around the site on all the street fronts, um, to, to create a project that can be recognized from any side, and also on the east side from the new hotel project, treating that as basically a primary facade, so that, that parking lot or whatever project that becomes, has a nice, uh, facade to look at as well. So being along Benita Beach Road, we made our, our main focus on that street front and then took those elements and repeated them basically around the other sides of the project. So those elements being, uh, this is the only place where we have a, a peak roof feature to create that tower, so it creates that sense of welcome to the site, and also it's different than all the other street fronts. And by extending that hipped roof out three feet, we've provided brackets, um, as a decorative feature along that front. We've taken those same brackets and used them also for the Bahamas shutter feature over each of the framed windows along the facade and created a rhythm along that facade by spacing them, um, in equal distances. And then again, setting the tower feature apart by raising those windows higher and offsetting them with lights on each side and bringing the horizontal siding down in all of these areas, but then also creating a stucco, a smooth stucco feature behind those Bahamas shutters. Creates a mixture of textures and colors along that facade. And then up top, creating an articulated parapet with banding, larger banding on the top, smaller banding to frame the horizontal siding below, and then a place for signage and branding. And then taking decorative features, um, and putting those along the parapet areas. So this is it in 3D, which you've seen a couple times now, but we've also treated the side elevations as primary facades on, on the three sides of this Benita Beach Road elevation, just taking those same details and repeating them on the side. You can see our bike rack, we have a bench, and this is the eight-foot common path in front. Again, you can see the shadows that are created by the Bahamas shutters and the roof overhangs. This facade is along Okina Street, and this is the, the screen wall that Greg talked about that blocks your view as you drive along, uh, Okina. You're not looking down into the parking lot in between these two buildings, but rather a, a featured wall that brings in the same textures and materials as the building. And then with, there will be a low hedge of plantings in front of that as well, and the one- or two-foot berm. So again, bringing those same details onto this elevation as well, and breaking it into two smaller buildings helps to alleviate long, long building planes. And as you turn the corner then, to Vanda Drive, bringing those same elements along and Vanda Drive, there are Bahamas shutters, articulated parapet, and then again, we have a space here where people actually enter the site in their cars and breaking up that long elevation into two buildings. More landscaping and buffer along this zone, because we do have residential across the street. But again, they will not see the overhead doors, but rather the exterior of the building. And this is a kind of aerial 3D vision of the plan. This is the elevation seen from the east, where we're not sure what this development will be yet, but we will have three rows of twenty-foot plantings and, uh, bunches or, um, clusters of trees along that facade. And behind that, you'll see the articulated parapet with detailing to, to be cohesive with the rest of the project, but because we have so much landscape in that area, it will be blocked, um, or it will help create a nice sense along that facade. This is the east side of the front, Benita Beach Road building, and as you pull in to the site, you'll turn left back in here to enter the interior of the site, where we think we have clustered these buildings and screen walls and landscaping around such that there will be no visibility of those overhead doors, and it creates a nice interior space for the customers to feel safe and secure inside with, with their, um, high-end storage items that they'll be taking in and out of those overhead doors. There won't be visibility from the public, so to speak. Here is the eight-foot public way in front of the building. And we think that we've come up with a cohesive language here that brings in the old Florida from the neighborhood, but also accentuates it and, um, makes a precedent for future development. I've got one more. And down at eye level, this is what you'll see, coming into our site, passing in front of our site, and on your way to the beach. Creating shadow along that eight-foot, or, uh, shade and shadow along that eight-foot public way, shadows on the building. Okay, so we're going to get into, um, the evolution of this design. You know, as an architect, I am charged with striking a balance between what my owner desires, between what is good design and also what the authority having jurisdiction would like to see in this area. So when the client first came to us, they wanted modern, a modern architectural style. And this style is permitted in your code, but we soon found out that it was not, it was not something that your jurisdiction wants in the beach zone of the new visioning plan, perhaps. So we were steered in the direction of old Florida. However, we, we personally, or as an architect, don't think that old Florida is the only style that can convey a beach town. And, um, so we came up with some modern designs, um, this being just one example of it, but we, we could bring in those same design features that we noticed in the neighborhood and other beach towns with the horizontal siding, but, uh, doing that in a natural wood feature. And then the colors of the sand, the sea, the water, sea glass, um, you know, in our windows, window articulation here, and then also creating a large canopy overhang across the building to create deep shadows, like the deep roof overhangs that you see in old Florida architecture. So, um, and then this also acting as a gateway or a landmark along Benita Beach Road to the beach. So we hope that, uh, we'd like to get your feedback on the design. Um, we have, you know, we have realized that old Florida is, um, a safe design and something that, that does fit in with some of the architecture in the area, but, um, we hope that you'll consider that it's not the only style for a beach town and that, um, there are other styles that can convey beachiness as well. So, I think that's... Sorry. Oh, okay, so we threw these in here as other examples of, um, beach towns that are exploring the modern style and, um, actually embracing it in their communities with the use of stucco. Uh, they did bring in natural materials of wood in this project, and then having a fun feature of glass on the exterior of the building, glass tile that resembles sea glass. And also Hermosa Beach, California, bringing in the, the horizontal siding, natural wood materials, large overhangs with the roof, and just creating a, a beachy atmosphere, um, not necessarily with old Florida architecture. So thank you for letting me go through that modern design spiel there, and I'll give it back to Greg.
Personally, I like modern, but it's your call. I would like to discuss, uh, condition six B and six C, but before I do that, relating to six C, let me go back here. Yeah, here we go. Uh, six C, looking at the staff report, uh, excuse me, looking at your draft resolution, says, uh, a condition may be delete, uh, can be deleted because the gate removed. This is, this is the gate that it's, it's a reference to. Staff was concerned that though we met the stacking standard, that there, if this is developed as a hotel or something intensive, and this is a shared driveway, though you would have continuing, continuous turning movements, right turning movements in, if in fact you have an RV or, um, you know, a truck that's towing a, a large boat and they're waiting for the gate, it could create stacking conflicts. And we work with staff, and staff worked with us, or more like worked over us, but, ultimately, we, um, decided on deleting that gate entirely. So the, I think there's another graphic that shows the gate. The gate's gone, so consequently, um, and, and staff can speak to this, it's my understanding that six C also will be stricken in its entirety, because now there will not be any potential, uh, turning movement conflicts, so six C's gone. So I wanted to get that out of the way, but again, staff obviously can speak to that. Look, six B, i- it seems pretty straightforward, but this really is a very significant and profound issue to the project, and I, and I'll walk you through that. Six, uh, uh, six B basically is saying at some point in time, if the city in Lee County, uh, closes that access or, or makes decisions that would, um, that would necessitate, uh, the closing, then there should be an easement that would potentially allow for cross-access. And that's, you know, that's pretty straightforward, but, but it's really not, in that when you really start looking at this project in its entirety and the, uh, and again, this is probably a ten thousand square foot parcel, both the convenience store and Taco Mix is a little over ten thousand square feet, so it's, you know, it's a very small property. Um, this property does not need to go through the Benita Breeze Project to go east. Given, given, uh, the more functional suitability, the, the wider pavement, the deeper stacking, it's much more likely and functionally feasible to, uh, to use Okiana and then go up Vanda Drive, or more rational from my perspective, if in fact they want to go east, they're going to use the existing full movement, full turning movement intersection and just hang a left and go east. Uh, the only reason that this, if this is gone or redeveloped or whatever, would want to go east through this property is to use this site. If this site is, again, it's my understanding, it may be a hotel, but whatever it is, it's got limited functionality in terms of providing for a, a specific trip, trip, trip destination, um, uh, goal. Or in other words, if they want to go to there, it's just as easy to take Vandy. So when you look at that, it's just not practical. Certainly it's not practical, because you've got the Taco Mix restaurant blocking it, so you know, that needs to be, you know, uh, taken into account. As I pointed, oh, I said ten thousand, I meant to say thirteen thousand square feet. So when you have an easement that, that ultimately enables some, or potentially enables some type of interconnection, you're encumbering a very small property and forcing them to, to design that to, to meet a, an interconnection that's not needed, given the fact that they're located, um, uh, on, um, on a corner with the full turning movement at Benita Beach Road. Um, and again, when you look at it, right here is a shallow depth versus, uh, Vanda, which is much deeper. You want greater depth in your turning movements and your traffic for all the obvious functional reasons. Equally important, and, and this is from my experience, uh, you know, in financing projects and, 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 and matching capital to, to vision, these types, uh, these types of easements are language that will lead to easements or, 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 though they seem innocent, there are significant encumbrances that will limit or hinder, uh, the financing of a project, because major, uh, institutions, we go, oh, well, we don't really understand this, this is a question mark. And anytime you bring question marks to the equation in your, in financing development, you know, they'll just, okay, next, let's go on to the next project, because what you want to do when you're getting financing from conventional lenders is to make sure that there are no question marks. And this is a major question mark, which will absolutely hinder, uh, the, uh, easy financing of the project. Uh, and equally important, speaking with the developers, and they spoke with their marketing team, okay, you have four units here, okay? And you have, let's say you have through traffic here, and just for, just for discussion, you'd have a highway convenience commercial-type use. So you're having traffic going back and forth. Now, if you're trying to sell four units, uh, and yet you're showing the four units and there's constant traffic going back and forth and then using this driveway, it's a perceptual nuisance, but more important, if in fact you do end up closing on these units and some guy's bringing in his boat or RV or whatever, and he's trying, you know, and he's coming in like that, and he wants to pull into his unit, and yet he's, you've got traffic going back and forth. So there's, there's potential traffic conflict. Uh, when you look at bullet point three, I, I mean, again, this is a very small project, and four units, sixteen percent of your inventory, all of a sudden, you're really limiting the marketing potential of that. Uh, if you can't sell four units, uh, the projects, I mean, that's, that's almost the margin. I, I mean, it's very significant. Um, we, uh, and, well, hi, I, I can't stress strongly enough the, the, the importance of deleting this. It, and the reason why, again, uh, the issues that I stated, but going back to it, it's just not functionally needed. If you did not have any option other than this, I can see how you can go with it. But in this particular case, again, when you look at a, a functionally superior Vanda Drive connection, you know, as long, and this is the caveat, as long as when this project goes forward, you make sure that they have an easement connection too, you know, because right now there are no easement connections, so you would have to take that into account. But for the, for the limited opportunity of, of, of whatever happens here, you know, to use the hotel site or whatever is going to go forward with that, uh, they'd use Vanda. And, and it's just more functionally reliable and it's, and it just makes sense. So, um, I really do request that you look at this issue very hard. And then finally, um, if you, if you feel that you need to stick with some type of condition, if I can pass out...
Fred? Thank you.
I mean, our, our preference is to delete it. Again, it's just not needed. It'll cause great harm to the viability of the project. I'm not saying that it's going to destroy the project, but if all of a sudden you're really inhibiting financing and you're really inhibiting, you know, successful marketing, that's a big hit, and this is a good project. I sincerely believe this is going to be a great project for the city. Uh, if you don't want to delete it, the alternative language, uh, I think is, is, is meaning, meaningful, um, in our original discussions with Jay and Jackie, uh, a month or two ago, we were talking about having a language, if, you know, similar to what's in front of you in terms of, well, if, if both our property redevelops and the Taco Mix site redevelops, and then the city and the county decide on closing the access, that will be the threshold. So what, that language in front of you basically elevates the threshold, and that would allow for, uh, the project to go forward without the big question marks that, uh, right now six, uh, six B presents. So to, to wrap up, um, we implement the goals, uh, as I pointed out, we exceed your standards, as I pointed out. Uh, with the exception of six B, everything reasonably relates, the conditions that staff's put together reasonably relates to the project, it fits, it... I kind of get a little emotional at the end, but thank you very much. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Could you go back? Great presentation. Fantastic, and I commend your efforts. You're very thorough. I'd just like to, could you go back to one of the slides that would show the dome of the building?
The tower, you mean?
The tower. But, yeah, there, that's a good view, or, yeah, that's fine. What's the height currently proposed?
Twenty-four?
Yeah.
Twenty-four feet?
It's 24 feet, and then the tower would go slightly above that.
Right.
Probably five more, four to five more feet above that.
Would you be amenable to working with the arts and public places if needed? I, I think right now, as you're looking at that picture, in my mind, you're second cousins to agreement with the arts and public places, if that makes any sense. So, if you would just, would you be amenable to checking with them to make sure, I had mentioned branding a little bit earlier, that would be consistent with some things the city is discussing?
Sure, such as, I mean...
It just, if you would be amenable on final design, that may be, well, it, that may be it, but if you would be open to letting them view at it, look at it as well?
Sure. I'm not familiar, is that, is that like the Tree Preservation Board, especially?
Correct, correct. It's a citizens committee.
Okay, so that's something we could just get on the agenda and present?
Right. And John, that would be fine, right?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much. Like I said, I think it's very close, and then, of course, you know, it could be higher than 24 feet, I don't know.
Good point.
Okay?
All right.
Thank you. Council, what's your pleasure? Mike?
I had a couple of questions. You had mentioned you were going to have an enclosed bus stop, or roof over bus?
I meant to say roof bus stop, yes.
You didn't show that on the plan, but you alluded that it was on the western edge, but, like, right, right there, you have a sidewalk, or connection to the sidewalk on the eastern edge?
It's right there.
So, are you going to hide the bus stop behind the landscaping, and how are they going to get out to where the bus would be?
Well, that's a good question. We had it offset, because we were coming up with, because we wanted to have ample landscaping, let me get back to the plan graphic, in the front, let's see here. We didn't have that, we don't have that much width, I think we had like a five to seven foot width here, but if, in fact, as part of the design, if, what you're saying makes sense, we could cut in, instead of having a full eight foot, maybe we, eight foot to six foot, and that would allow, you know, to put a bus stop along the front, and it would still be, you know, shaded and canopied. We just went with a standard eight foot.
I'm, I'm fine with it being back behind, but you're not leaving an access for people to get out to where the bus is going to be, so they're going to be traipsing through your landscaping.
Yeah, well...
If, if you move that connection over to where the bus stop's going to be, that would resolve that. If you go to the right, you have that connection, yeah, right there?
We can do that.
Okay. It, to me, it would just make more sense. And then, in there, you had a prohibition on excessive and prolonged noise. How would you define that, especially since you mentioned that you might be looking, having people doing woodworking and stuff like that in there?
Well, woodworking being closed, I was really thinking pressure washing, that type of thing, you know, because pressure washing, depending on your units, old units are pretty noisy. So, you know, the prohibit, prohibition of that would be one, one good example. And then inherently, because you're not running businesses, it's more, you know, crafts, so there shouldn't be that much noise, but it would be a condominium restriction similar to, again, Benita Pelican Landing or something that prohibits noise on the balconies, or, you know, or, you know, that type of thing.
Okay.
But we were thinking of pressure washing specifically.
Okay, well, because you mentioned people might want you to do like a wood shop in it, instead of having it at their home, so I just wanted to make sure that wasn't going to conflict with the, with your noise.
And the units are air-conditioned, so we would just probably...
It'd probably be shut up.
Shut up, yeah.
And quieter. And then the other, you had mentioned about the framed windows on the front, are they actual windows, or they're blacked out, or is it just a design treatment, so it looks like there's windows there, but you're not going to actually see into the units?
Yeah, we're still looking at options on that.
Mike, please.
Oh, okay. We're still looking at options on how to treat that glass. We, we've talked with staff about doing a glass tile, actually, that, that looks like windows, but has a wall behind it, so that you can't see into those units, because that is a concern with security. Or also, a heavily tinted type window, that would prevent people from looking in and seeing what's in there. So, we're still looking at that option.
Okay, and then also on the eastern elevation, on the, the long building, will there be the window treatments and the shutters there, or you're just doing the trees and...
On the east side?
Yeah, because if there is, you know, going to be a hotel, like, right, because right there, you can't tell if there's anything behind those trees or not, but if there is going to be a hotel there, you know, wouldn't we want that side to look nice also?
No, we're not planning on putting windows on that side. We could possibly, if we need, when we go through the design standards process and make sure, right now, we think we're exceeding that on all the facades. That one, we're still looking at, and if we need to do some Bahamas shutters or some kind of other decorative feature along that wall, we will consider that at that point.
And if I could, if I could speak also, the, the complex is designed to basically say, all the, all the, the northwest and the south orientations are primary facades. The east, that, that faces the Benita Springs Utility Easement, isn't a primary facade, so the design standards don't require that, and so, we're not showing it now, probably that's how it's going to look, because again, we're, we're going so top-shelf on the other stuff, you know, to try to keep this thing under budget. But it's a BSU easement, it's a non-primary, so we're keeping it simple. That said, though, we're, we're still treating this portion as a primary facade, too, just not the long, not the 180-foot long building.
Fred?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. First of all, I want to compliment the architect. As one architect to another, you did a good job. But I, I'm more concerned about other things mucking up a good design. If, if some of the people, for example, that have these high-end condo units, if they were to have businesses and they had what's called wrapped vehicles, will they at all be visible, especially from Benita Beach Road, where you see stuff that really detracts from the beauty of the architecture and the landscaping?
Well, the deed restrictions and, and ownership association docs will prohibit businesses from being, period. No businesses are allowed, commercial businesses, so, so that...
Well, I'm, I'm talking about, imagine I'm an owner. I've got another business. I drive a, I drive a vehicle that's wrapped. I come out to my condo, I park it out in front of the condo or wherever. Is it going to be visible? And if it is, can you, are you amenable to putting something in your condo docks that would be part of our approval, that would preclude that from being possible, because that, I mean, you've got a beautifully designed facility, but, you know, stuff happens like that.
Well, we do have outdoor storage, boat trailers, RVs, and other things are prohibited. So, I mean, we envision if someone, I mean, you know, they temporarily park, but then they go in, I mean, that's just part of the association, so...
Yeah, but that temporary park, if, if that shows from Beach Road, there, you've got a bunch of...
Oh, I see, I see. Yeah, I see. It, well, it shouldn't show, council member. Yeah, because if you look at it, let me see, where's the air photo?
It's all visible inside.
Yeah, it really, because this goes, it's a five-foot offset from the west boundary, and it's a 10-foot offset from the drive. It shouldn't show. Yeah, I mean...
Do you have a, another shot that would show it better?
The plan view? Yeah, let's go back to the plan view.
A drone view?
A drone view.
Well, actually, that, right there, that might show it better.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Actually, it's more than, I'm sorry, it's more than a five-foot offset, it's more like a, looking at, so it's probably a 20-foot offset from the east boundary.
And for the record, Jaclyn Gensen, in the packet on page, I believe it's 40, in the draft regulations, there is a whole section dedicated to parking, and there is stipulations about the prohibition of overnight parking. It's actually Section 11.11.
But that still doesn't...
I was going to say, so let's answer the question, or I mean, I'll, I'll ask it. Is, will there be any vehicles visible to Benita Beach Road or any other road, and if so, do we need to make any changes accordingly?
No, other than...
Okay, but I mean, I think we need to have those questions answered, as an absolute.
Other than, again, I mean, when they enter into the property, you know, and... By the way, not the gate. Yeah, they, they may park outside to open the, you know, just temporarily, and then they usually go in their, into their units. Store, outside storage is prohibited, so...
But, so, but if I drive my vehicle-wrapped car to my, you're, I'm supposed to park inside, that's what you're saying?
Yes.
No outside parking?
That's correct.
Other than a few minutes?
Yes. Well, and then, of course, the project does feature, you know, by code, it has four parking, four parking spaces. These guys are screened by the wall, these guys are screened by taco mix and the landscape buffer. Would you be able to see them, I mean, just being realistic, you know, if you're like right here on Benita Beach Road and you're looking north, you know, northeast, you'd see, you know, you'd see a parked car. I mean, you know, I mean, you, you would, just being real, it wouldn't be that much of it, though. It's not like the, because everything's enclosed, but it's impossible to seal this thing off 100%. I hope that answered.
John, do you have anything to add to that? Before we move off, off of that point, or continue it? Thank you.
I think that the site is relatively well-screened. I think the only place that you would necessarily see a vehicle would be from Vanda, looking south into the project, but I think that what we're talking about is, is a possibility with very minute implications. If somebody does have a wrapped vehicle and owns a unit, how often are they going to be there? Where are they going to park this vehicle? I'm not exactly sure that the time that this could be effective or a concern would really rise to the point of a condition in, in the zoning ordinance. If it, if it does wind up being a situation, we do have parking standards for, for wrapped vehicles used for advertisements and other sections of the code, and we could apply that section to this location as well.
Council, any questions for John? Great, thanks, John. Amy?
I have general questions.
Oh, I, I, I think, we don't have to, but it's your turn, if you'd like it to be.
I have several.
Your mic.
First of all, could we just talk about the monument sign? I know on your pictures, you have signs up at the roof line. Is the monument, is separate from that, or, or, can they, Jackie, they can have signs up on, by the roof line, right? Isn't that allowed?
Correct, they can have wall signs on their elevations, and then they can have separate ground monument signs.
So, what they're talking about is a ground monument, and that's going to be elevate, the five by 10 is in what direct, is that the size of the sign, and then it's going to be elevated some amount?
Five foot in height, 10 foot in width. The standard is seven by 14, or seven by 12. I think it's seven by 12 is the standard.
So, where would you put it in, in your, along with all your...
Right there.
So, it would be inside of the bike path, basically?
It would be outside. Here's Benita Beach Road, sidewalk.
Yeah, and the sidewalk would be there.
And then there would be the...
And then they, you might have a, a wall sign also, which I, I sort of like the wall sign myself.
Yes.
I think that's attractive, all right. Excuse me. And then, I just want to talk about the uses, usage. I know we have a prohibition against residents there, but in another meeting, we talked about things like man caves, and, and I know that you have a provision for access to aerial space, so there could be like a loft put in, and there's also plumbing. So, my concern would be to have these be party rooms of sort, and this would integrate with noise restrictions. So, even though it's not a resident, people could use it for that purpose, isn't that correct, according to your condominium documents?
Not really, but could someone set up a loft and have a big old flat-screen TV and watch, you know, whatever NFL football game? Yeah, sure. Would that, I mean, we just look at it, I, I mean, the, the price points of these units are really high, are really high, so the economic, or the demographic cohort that we're dealing with aren't exactly, you know, people in their twenties to thirties that really like to party and raise a lot of, you know, raise a lot of noise. So, plus they'd be enclosed, I don't see that as an issue. And also, you do have the self, the self-regulating aspect of a condominium, you know, there's an association, and I'm sure the association, if, if people are obeying the rules, I mean, you look, I live, I've lived in association before, and they're pretty strict.
Right, but, but if you look at your rules, there's no, you know, and if you have such a, I never believed that this would happen in a storage unit, but we had a discussion about this at one of these other things, that they, that some storage units in Naples indeed have these kinds of units being utilized in that way, and I don't think it has anything to do with price points. You know, if, if people want to have it, then they'll have it. And this, and if you have that kind of situation, you're going to have a traffic, because you're not going to just go there by yourself and watch your, you know, 60-inch TV, you're going to have other people coming, and you don't have enough parking to do that. I assume the parking is going to be right in front of the units, is that how they do it? How do you envision this working? I'm not quite sure about that.
Well, you have three, three parking spaces here, and two here, so you have five total. Well, what we envision, I mean, and no, parking won't be in the aisle, parking aisles or in front of the units.
So, when you want to put stuff in, you park, you put it, stuff in?
Just, well, they're, for example, the long building, the 180-foot long building, these are, they're, they're 40 or 45 feet in depth.
Right.
So, you know, in a typical garage is 21 to 22, sometimes 24 feet in depth, so it's almost twice as deep, so...
Two, two, yeah.
You know, these are really deep units, so, yeah, if, if they're unloading stuff, they just pull into their garage. Or, you know, let's say they don't want to pull in all the way, these, this parking aisle is, if I can recall, 40 feet or 45? Yeah, it's 40 feet, so then you'd have, let's say, let's say, he's sticking out 20 feet, you know, there, but that's just a temporary situation.
Right, so they would just be there to unload, all right.
And, but back to the noise, it is important to point out, I mean, this is a commercial district. There are plenty of uses, like an office use, though. I mean, there, there are other uses that can contribute a lot more impacts than this, and this is typically a quiet use, but I, I'm not going to sit here and say, no, no one's going to have a man cave and a flat-screen TV, but I just doubt that'll be a problem, given the self-regulated nature of it.
If you, if this was a, an individual office, you could set up your office here, right, if you wanted to?
No.
As long as nobody would come and visit you, you know, it would just be for your own personal use, like your study.
For your, yeah, for your study, like for me, I, I mean, if I, if I had the money to buy one of these things, I'd probably have it as a painting studio and a study, and do business work, and, you know, and that type of thing.
Right.
I'm sure you'll see that a lot. But it's pretty low-key, so, plus they're only 25 units. So, again, I just don't see that, from what I understand of the market and the stuff that I've read, I don't think that's a realistic, there's not a realistic expectation for those types of problems to occur, so...
As I said, I had no idea that this is, was, is being used, but that was what we were told at a...
Is that, and you referring to the project off, was it Radio Road in Davis?
I don't know where it was, but people were telling us, and I said, this is astounding to me, you know, but this is, they do have that, those kinds of issues.
Because if...
Because, you know, if your husband, if you want, if your guys, you don't want them, you know, making noise at home, you kick them out and they go to their own room, and they do whatever they want, so drink beer, I mean, I don't know, I don't, I don't get it.
But I, yeah, I...
It's not for me, but I would, I hope there wouldn't be no, I, I think you've done a great job on the project, it's so positive in so many ways, and so it's not that, I, I don't appreciate, I do appreciate the effort that you've made to make it compatible with our vision, because, you know, we're just starting out along that vision. But I didn't know if in the condominium associations, there could be some aspect where the management of the condo could be in a position where that would be dampened down or not encouraged in some way.
Yeah.
Because it could, it could create a problem for you in the long run, really.
Well, I do remember, if it's that, because, because I looked at that project off of Davis and Radio, and, and it's, it's three times as large, and it, it's surrounded on two sides by residential projects, and this particular...
you could be some aspect where the management of the condo could be in a position where that would be dampened down or not encouraged in some way. Because it could, it could create a problem for you in the long run, really.
Well, I do remember, if it's that, because, because I looked at that project off of Davis and Radio, and it's, it's three times as large, and it's surrounded on two sides by residential projects, in this particular case, it's adjoining one duplex, and it's in a commercial district. So, again, the context is everything on that.
Does staff have any concern about this, or?
For whatever it's worth, I'll just point out, in the condo documents, there is prohibitions against nuisances generally, and it does point to excessive noise as being something that's prohibited. Beyond that, I don't know if Jackie has anything.
I mean, if it's this council's desire, you can request that the condominium docs do address those concerns that you brought up regarding communal recreational gatherings or things of that nature, that is this council's purview. If you feel it's to address compatibility concerns for this specific use.
Do you want to make that a motion, Amy, or?
Yeah, well, I think I do, yes, I don't know how you phrase it, but.
I guess that would have to be language additional to prevention of excessive noise, it would have to be something, prevention of communal gatherings that also cause excessive noise, or something along those lines.
Excessive noises, yeah, I mean, where's it end, I mean, that's my question, we already have a noise ordinance out there now.
Correct, and condition three is where we have in the zoning ordinance itself, a discussion on use restrictions. So we can modify that condition and add some more, greater specificity, so we can review that at time of local development order, should the council recommend approval of the project. So there's a couple ways, we can handle it directly in the zoning ordinance, or we can go ahead and condition it that it's done at time of local development order in their condominium documents, or both.
Thank you, Jackie, John?
And just kind of getting down to, what are we looking to promote and what are we looking to prohibit in this particular case? Do we not want groups of people gathering here, do we not want excessive noise? I'm not, I understand that the outcome or the concern that you've got of turning this basically into a private party room, but what, how are we looking to, to regulate, or is that a place for us to regulate in this particular location? So what do we want to prohibit, do we want to prohibit people from having more than a certain number of guests? And how do you regulate that, or do we just want to prohibit noise and traffic?
Well, we do prohibit residents there.
Correct.
And, and my view that there is like an external subset of residents that we might be able to accommodate here, and do we want to also prohibit, why do we prohibit residents, that's the question, you know, you know?
Well, it goes into a lot of different standards, everything from the way that the units would be constructed to what's provided there, to different compatibility issues, so that's really why we look at keeping this as more of a commercial nature. But in terms of the operation of this, if I own a unit, am I not allowed to have friends over to look at my new car and to watch my flat screen? And if I am limited to that number, what is that number and why have we established that number? I understand the concern that this can quickly grow out of hand, I'm just not exactly sure if a zoning ordinance is going to be the best regulation for that concern, we have noise ordinances in place, we have certain codes of conduct within the city that apply to everyone. When we start getting into the operation of this, I don't know if we're, we're an answer looking for a question yet.
You'd have to do it through use, I mean, all the uses which we have discussed are fine, office, woodworking, all those things, but you know how, when you write regulations, that people have a way of doing things that you don't expect them to do, that you probably, probably wouldn't be in favor of, and that's where I'm coming from.
And actually, what you're, what you're outlining is something that we did consider, it's just something I'm not exactly sure how you would successfully regulate in the zoning ordinance. The possibility of someone, and I'll just take the worst-case scenario of someone that we've, including several items we've discussed today. Someone purchases a unit, they have a business with multiple wrapped cars, the whole family shows up with friends to watch football games, and they leave the garage door open with the radio blaring, that's probably-
And drinking beer.
God forbid.
And causing traffic.
What else could you ask for?
So, so that's probably, I think, based on your discussion, the worst-case scenario.
Yeah, maybe the parking, and we have very limited parking here, so maybe practically, if they took all the parking spaces, there couldn't be that many people unless they walked in or something, right?
Well, that is a concern, really what we've seen, there are always exceptions, but from what we've seen, how these facilities generally operate, is you have someone with, with something that they appreciate, whether it's a very valuable car, whether it's a hobby, and, and their spouse does not want them using the house for this, and tell them to find another location, so this is the type of location that they find. And what you'll generally see is if they're not there polishing their car by themselves, they'll have two or three people over there with them to admire it, they stay there for maybe an hour to three hours, and they go home. Maybe they watch a game, maybe they watch the news, I don't know. But it does not tend to be an all-day thing, there are exceptions, I just outlined how this could turn bad. But under that worst-case scenario, we do have noise ordinances they would have to abide by, we do, we do have nuisance ordinances that would apply. And there is going to be, it was understated, but there is going to be that, that pressure from an association, those that also have units that want to use this as their yoga studio, they don't appreciate those that want to use this for their band practice. And those things tend to be worked out internally as opposed to zoning, but if there is a concern or you do want to address it, we could, I just don't know if this is the appropriate vehicle to really define the parameters of use for this particular type of operation.
But I'm not clear on how we would, because we talked, at the last time when this was brought up, we talked about having some kind of a ordinance for the city that would limit that use in a storage unit, but we didn't do anything about it.
Well, I think that one of the things-
What avenue would we follow?
What our concern in that point was when individuals or a couple of individuals purchase a commercial space and want to use it for their personal storage, and we have several of those in the city right now. And the problem we have with those is the fact that you've taken what the city has determined and evaluated and approved as a commercial use, something that's supposed to be an attractor for, for either traffic or for business, and turned it into generally a dark site, almost the exact opposite from what the city had wanted.
Well, I don't think that was our concern, our concern was just the opposite, that it was an inappropriate use. Storage is fine, everything, boats, you know, what, all that stuff. I'm concerned about where it could go in a limit, you know, to the limit, and the other extreme, pretty much a party room. I really don't care if guys want to come and watch their football game and have a few beers and use their, you know, facilities, but it's sort of like, more like a party room. That would be my concern, but I don't know, it might be over.
No, I think the concern is a valid one, because I think that it's not out of the realm of possibility that it could happen. I just think that there are certain regulations that we have in place that regulate that type of out-of-control behavior. If you want to, but also describe them here, that would be possible, I just, I'm not exactly sure if we want to, to have standards that apply here that don't apply citywide.
I agree, but I think it should, personally, it would just be a suggestion to the condominium manager to be certain that there would be some control over that, because it, honestly, it's happened in other areas. It's not in your best interest to have that.
Well, I think we would certainly accept, I mean, directions from the city council to staff, that when we get into the development order and we submit the final, you know, organizational documents and stuff, that we could address that as best we can, but I agree with John in terms of, I just don't see how, I mean, given the context of what this is, a resolution would be a really inefficient way of doing it, I think a condominium association document would be a superior.
But it's not there now.
Well, no, but it's still a work in progress, too, yeah, I mean, we, when we met with staff months ago, we were talking about this and a lot of other issues, and they said, well, look, let's get the condo documents, so, you know, we submitted them upfront, because we, you know, we want to be, we want to be 100% in sync with the elected officials and staff, and so we've got a good leg up on it, but it's still a draft, it's still a draft.
Okay, thank you.
And just along that, if you would like to recommend that we, or you condition this approval so that we do check the condominium documents, so that there is something in place that addresses this concern, that could be a very appropriate vehicle for this sort of regulation.
Would you be satisfied with that, if we just asked you to work with staff to review?
Yes, we work very well with staff, you know, I mean, they're, yes, yes.
Okay, that's good for, I'm fine with that.
Alex, we don't need a vote on that, correct, or just a nodding in the heads from council, what do you prefer?
Yeah, that should be fine.
Okay. Counsel, are we okay with that?
Well, I just got a couple of questions on, I mean, where does it get limited to, like, like John was talking about? When, all right, I got this new car, and I want to have all seven of us over, does that constitute a party? And we, I break out the beer, I mean, where does that, that's the problem I'm having with this whole thing, I mean.
How many of us show up?
All of us.
Oh, so we have a quorum, okay, well, that would be a problem in and of itself, right.
So you know so much beer, but. But, no, but that's where I'm having a problem about, okay, we're, how are we going to limit this? And second of all, I think I agree with the applicant, I think it's going to be self-policing, just like those of you that live in the gated communities, if somebody next door to you is having a party, you're calling the HOA and saying, hey, this isn't, this isn't kosher anymore, and it gets stopped. And I, that's where I think I agree with the applicant, that it's going to be self-healing or self-regulating, that if, hey, if I come to go look at my boat, and the guy next to me is having either a party or a Super Bowl party, and there's no parking, I'm going to go to the, to the property people at that, at that condominium and say, hey, this is a problem I have. So I just, I don't agree with putting more regulations or more stipulations on them. The documents that I've been reading here over the last couple of days and reading this, it's pretty much spelled out, you're not to be living in there, if somebody wants to stop by and look at what you're doing, I don't think it's a problem. So if five people stop by, okay, I mean, how many of us have ever had five people just stop by your house to hang out and to watch a football game or to do something, it's not a full-fledged party or a frat party we're having there, I mean, from the way I'm looking at this type of structure, this is on Benita Beach Road, it's west of 41, it's not going to be a mini storage that you're going to get for a couple hundred dollars a month, this is going to be high-end, this is not going to be something that, that I'm going to go rent to have a party at. And I'm sure they're going to have leases involved that where it's not going to be a month-to-month, and it's going to have the turnover that, that you see in a normal, you know, storage unit-type facility.
Right, John, go ahead, and then Fred.
And just as a quick point of clarification, I think that what we look to do, working with applicant, is to find a balance to make sure there was not internal conflict. External conflict is basically addressed through the zoning ordinance, I don't think there's really much question to that in terms of parking and access, where I think that we're going to have questions, and what we want to, and I think they have an interest in protecting, is that internal conflict, where are you going to have people, it's not a full-fledged party, but you've got a handful of friends, they all show up in their own cars, how is that going to be handled? So, it's not going to be looking to limit anybody's right to assembly, it's basically going to be looking at where do these people go and how do they operate when they're there, to make sure that internally they don't cause problems between different units.
The right to assemble. Fred?
Yeah, I think in the documents that community development's going to review, the way you handle this is this, you've only got so many parking spaces, now then, if you have more than that, that means you're going to have people parking in aisleways and all that, that, that's where you need to take care of this in the condo docs. And if you don't have it in the condo docs, even if people have a legitimate complaint, even if you're in an HOA, it's all about what the docs give you the power to enforce. I think you just enforce they can't be parking in places that don't exist by parking in aisleways and all that, and I think that'll handle it.
Thank you, Fred, Steve?
Yeah, thank you. I happen to agree with Greg, I know in our HOA community, we always get permission, you know, spring fling or whatever, welcome snowbirds, so it's pretty much under control, and so we really don't have too many problems with things like that. But first of all, I'd like to commend you on your presentation, secondly, I think the world of our community development team, and it appears that you are working cooperatively with them, you're also willing to work cooperatively with the council and look at that, those suggestions, and if, Jackie, if I may ask you, if you could just, are there any other concerns that the council should know about?
The only concerns we had were the application of condition 6B, and we can go over that in a little bit. And really, it comes down to, with the council's priorities on interconnectivity, we wanted to err on the side of caution and just ask for that cross-axis easement now as a preservation. If it ends up being utilized, when the property to the west redevelops, great, we have the ability, if it makes sense, and we want them to interconnect, fantastic, if it, if it doesn't make sense, then we don't have to utilize the easement. But Stuart Smith, Jay Sweet, and I can go ahead and discuss that, and as well, we do have Terrell Arlene from Theriak in Spain on the phone as well, so you're welcome to also ask for his opinion as well.
Arlene's on the phone?
Terrell Arlene, who is the special agents counsel with Theriak in Spain, is on the phone.
Okay, so what would be our plan now, can we?
We have to have the staff.
Yeah, I do have a presentation, it is quite lengthy, but I'm happy to go ahead and accelerate through those slides where there are duplicative points that Mr. Stuart has already brought in his presentation, I'll try to keep it-
I think you've heard our concerns, but-
Yeah, I think just, I mean, their only concern, their only conflict is 6B, why do we need to hear that?
Well, I would like to hear an explanation for Ian's comments, which I don't even, I don't even understand, to tell you the truth, so can you explain those to me, what was he talking about? I'm sorry.
No, that's fine, Ian Lockwood was trying to balance, he was not very fond of the use in itself.
He was not fond of what, I'm sorry?
The use.
The use?
Correct, he's looking at ways to activate streets and really bring people to the street. And then this use, as you know, it's a low-traffic generator, you're not going to have a lot of patrons utilizing this space. So from Ian's perspective, in terms of bringing streets alive, this use wasn't something that he would recommend. But for us, when we're trying to balance service capacity on Benita Beach Road, it actually could be a use that's beneficial to the city, because you're not going to have that much more trips on the road. And then Mr. Lockwood's comments were more so in some architectural comments, use of pavement, pavers, colors, and for things like that, we definitely rely on Sam Vincent, who is here today as well, that helped coordinate with the applicant's architect on different alternatives that we found were more in keeping with the beach zone. His other comments, we have since spoke to Ian, he will be more diplomatic in his comments and discussions with us, with staff, but that's really where Ian was coming from, was the uses in itself and activating streets.
And then finally, I really would like, didn't we have sort of a quasi-proposal on the hotel, right? I don't know where it is, but I don't understand the access there and how that would integrate with this property.
So, we're expecting any day now a rezoning application for the property to the east, which will, might be a Sheridan Hotel, in addition to some other possibly multifamily and commercial mixed-use component. And with that-
But they, they don't, do they have access to Benita Beach Road, the hotel property?
I probably have it in my presentation a little, actually, in an era, I do. So, we coordinated with Lee County extensively on this application as well, so they are preserving the interconnectivity to the east, and they're, so they are going to extend the cross-axis easement that currently exists here further to the north to allow some interconnectivity to the east. And then Jay Sweet from our office has had some discussions with the property owner to the east, or their agent, rather, and I believe the property owner, to explain the importance of interconnectivity here, but also along Vanda Drive. So we don't have a final site plan or master concept plan on that project, and, but they are aware that interconnectivity is very important to the city, there is an existing driveway just over here.
So they're not just using that other one to get there?
No, and there's actually, they have access, there's another railway system, it's Imperial Shores. Imperial Shores, they have, they will also be using that access as well, which is off of Benita Beach Road.
All right, that was just, I think that was my final question. Yep.
Counsel? It's your pleasure.
I guess my biggest question is why 6B, because there's taco mixes already there, from the, from what I've seen, it shows it like going right through the building itself, so there's, I just don't see even messing with, with 6B at all, because if anybody's going to come out and go left or right, they're going to take Okina. And then if the hotel comes through tonight, I think that's where we would go into and look at Vandy Drive connecting over to the Imperial River Road, rather than to put it right through, because we don't even know where the hotel's going to be on that site to the east.
That's right.
Because if it's up to the coast, that's going to leave that whole back area back that way, so, that's my thought on 6B itself.
Counsel?
We were, 6B is the one-
We were, 6B is the one with the wall, yeah, I agree, yeah. It's not the one that goes the other way. No, okay.
It's not right there.
That one, yeah.
Fred?
Aren't you expecting us to pick one of these architectural styles, too?
Staff recommended the Old Florida, zoning board agreed with staff. The way that the condition is worded for your review is you may also consider the alternative beach styles. That is definitely a request that the applicant has asked of this board, is for you to consider the modern design. So it is up to this council.
What was the vote on the zoning board, I'm sorry?
Six-zero, they wanted the beachy design, that was part of their condition, they modified that condition.
Do we wanna do, do we wanna do the elimination of 6B first, then go with Councilman Forbes' question on the architectural design?
That would be possible, and just not to add length to this, you may want Mrs. Gensen to provide you her presentation, simply because as a quasi-judicial hearing, you may want to have evidence and consistency established in the record. However, when you're looking at 6B, just a quick note, the reason why that is there is not because we are looking to have an interconnection today, tomorrow, or even in five years. But what we've noticed, especially recently, is where we've looked for interconnection, if there's not a specific condition that requires it when properties are redeveloped, we're not able to enforce it, and it's very difficult for us to gain that cross-access. So, we would recommend that you not accept the, the alternative language, but to approve it as we have recommended, simply because as these properties come back in to redevelop, or if they are redeveloped, even partially, then we can start working on whether this is appropriate or not. It's just a situation where if it is appropriate, when, when it's not phrased the way that we have proposed, it's been very difficult for us to gain that access.
I move to approve comments that John made about maintaining the language. Okay, has been a motion, is there a second? Motion and a second, further discussion?
Well, I'm just look, I mean, I'm not trying to muddy the waters, and I agree with John that if we get it in the future, but I'm just looking at, you know, the areas around there, there's no real interconnectivity to connect it to. So what are we doing our interconnectivity to connect it to? I'm looking at Beach Walk, Logaway, and all of the hotel across to the, to the west and to the east. It's gonna go into that hotel, which is then gonna go into Imperial River Road.
The comments that you are making are comments that could have been made on a handful of projects we're working on interconnection right now. And it is a situation where if everything stays the same as it is today, nothing changes. There's no reason for us to require interconnection, there is no, there's no purpose to it. However, as these properties redevelop, if the property to the east of this becomes a hotel in 10, 15 years, maybe this property becomes more valuable as another use, and they sell to, to redevelop, at that point, this new use may need to redevelop, because Taco Mix may be a part of this assemblage. So, because we don't have a crystal ball, and because we don't know how this property's gonna develop in the future, we're looking to, to preserve the ability to interconnect. Based on the current condition today, there's absolutely no reason for us to provide interconnection there. It doesn't make sense, the sites don't flow, we would have to move a building.
Right. And that's kinda what, you'd have to move all the buildings to the west, too, to get it to connect.
Exactly.
And I guess that's where I'm looking at, it'd be more advantageous to really strong, I hate to use the word strong, the multimodal and that wide of a bikeable, walkable path, rather than to do it this way.
But ju, just so the council is aware, you will start to see this condition more and more. And the reason why is because we want to protect the ability to provide these alternative access points and increase access to other sites. This is not something we're looking at being specific to just this property or just this section of Benita Beach Road. We're gonna be looking at this type of thing more and more citywide. And, and as, it's very important, because as the city gets closer and closer towards buildout, these opportunities to improve access and traffic flow are gonna become more and more reduced. So, we really need to take advantage of these when we have the opportunity. I, I'm not looking to cause confusion or difficulty with the applicant's financing, but what I do wanna make sure of is, in 20 years, if this site becomes more valuable as something else, and that redevelopment needs interconnection, we have the ability to do that.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
The record's still on, Greg Stewart, and tying into John's comments, because I've already made my case about wanting it stricken, but the language in front of you specifically, specifically ties into the redevelopment of both properties. So the language is there that, that John just mentioned, whereas if you read staff's language, staff's language does not have any language about both properties being redeveloped. So, our preference again is to strike it, but if you're not gonna strike it, go with our language, because then that's very specific about, okay, if, if Taco Mix redevelops and we redevelop, yeah, we'll do it. But right now, if you read staff's language, there's, you know, it doesn't get that specific about the threshold tying into a, a cross, cross-accesses.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any questions or points there? Okay, has been a motion and a second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Can you read the motion, so we all understand what we're voting on?
Alex?
This is a motion, I believe not to approve the whole ordinance yet, but to maintain 6B as a condition as it's currently written in the case report.
Great, thank you.
And, and I'd like to, why exactly is the alternative condition not good?
Good morning, Stuart Smith.
Good morning.
Development Engineer, Community Development.
And, and just for the record, Stuart has been tendered as an expert witness in engineering for the city.
Yes, I have. I do not agree with the language proposed by the applicant, because there's too many, too many ifs. It says, if, in the event the parcel to the west and the applicant's parcel are redeveloped, and third item has to occur, the city and Lee County agree to close the access from Taco Mix to Benita Beach Road, cross-access would be provided. I don't agree, that's too many ifs. John Dolmer, I think, pointed out very well, we, for connectivity, need flexibility. We're not saying that providing the connectivity now, we'd use it now, but at least we have it there for future development, whatever occurs. Even if just Taco Mix redevelops. There's ax, cross-access there, that if it makes sense, it's safe, and the city wants to use it, it can be used. And for that reason, I suggest you do not use the recommended language. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Counsel, questions or?
Hey, I don't know, I kind of agree with Greg, I mean, between Okina and Vanda, I, I really don't see why you would need another access there. You know, the Taco Mix property, again, well, it looks like it's two properties, but either way, the, the smaller property on the corner has access to, well, there's no access directly to Beach Road, but you have Okina. And then the other L-shaped property, same thing, you know. Even if it loses the access to Benita Beach Road, you have the side-street access that's right there. We're not talking about a huge piece of property, it's relatively small, so I, I still don't understand why would we, why would we need this? I mean, what down the road would trigger needing this?
And the fact that it would directly impact the property owner on this one, I mean, let's think about it, when we were looking at industrial and Old 41 to take away that pork chop, we didn't wanna put that cut-through there because of how it was gonna impact that business. That's exactly what we're gonna do here if this is implemented. It's gonna impact those storage units, those high-end condominium storage units that are, the way that the parking is right there, and that's exactly what we didn't wanna do on Old 41 off Industrial Street in Tennessee in that area. And that's why we had, cost this council or cost the cities, what, $60,000 to take that pork chop out and to redevelop that whole 41 area right there, Tennessee.
Thanks, Greg. John?
I think that what we're looking at is a situation that none of us can predict. I think you make a very valid point. Under the current situation, there really isn't much of a need for this. In fact, based on the existing development patterns, it's difficult to imagine a need. However, there is the possibility where things could redevelop in a way where it would be necessary. I don't even think Mr. Smith, uh, Mr. Stewart's telling you that there isn't a possibility that would be needed in the future, but I think what we're discussing is what would allow that trigger. So, I don't think anybody that's presented information to you today is saying that they don't envision a possibility of it being needed. I think what really is being presented to you is, under what condition should that cross-access be provided? So, we have presented a situation that just allows the flexibility for things to develop as they may, and based upon the situ, situation that we are presented, we would then respond accordingly, either with requesting the access or without. I think what Mr. Stewart has presented to you provides a set of conditions under which a checklist would have to be completed before the access could be provided. So, really, the, the question to counsel is, under what circumstances would you like to see a cross-access provided there? Under the situation Mr. Stewart has presented, which provides defined criteria, or what your staff has presented, which allows for the assumption that we do not understand what will take place there in 20 years, and however it develops, we will base it, our interpretation, upon what's requested of us.
Well, and, and wouldn't that put an undue burden on the Taco Mix property? Because if you put a cross-access across their entire property, you're eating up a large portion of it, and you're gonna limit what they can build there.
It wouldn't necessarily be across their entire property, it would basically be into their property. And I think that if they're, if they lose their direct access onto Benita Beach Road, this might be a more attractive alternative for them. And it would at least provide them, them access on both sides, the east and the west, on the northern part of their property.
But i, if I was that property owner, though, I wouldn't want my customers having to turn before they even get to me, go through this property. I'd rather them see my sign, make a right on Okina, and then make a right into my property, so it, to me, it doesn't make sense.
And it may not be for their entrance, it may be for their exit. I don't know.
Yes, sir?
Just one more comment. Yeah, I, I concur with John, really, my language, it does elevate the threshold, so, so you're correct. So really, stepping back, the, the issue is whether weighing the, weighing the public policy benefits of, of supporting a, a, a good project now and eliminating possible harm, marketing and finance, and there, that's, that's a real issue versus a long-term possibility of needing this. So really, the balance is, okay, you know, do we do something now to support a project? Or we do something and condition it that will hurt the project? So it's clearly a balancing, and it's your decision, and thank you.
Counsel?
And i, is this a, for lease? Or this is condo sales, right?
They're condominium sales.
So it would be tougher to redevelop, because you're gonna have 25 individual owners?
Yes. Yes. I mean, I mean, quite frankly, it's similar to, if this, if this was a residential project, we would be probably making the same arguments, you know, long-term versus short-term, because it would hinder a residential project in marketing and finance, because it creates questions and marketability. It's, it's really that simple, long, long-term possible needs versus short-term impacts. But it really would, I'm sincerely, from a professional perspective, it, it will present short-term impacts in financing and marketing.
Counsel?
I'd be more for going for the alternative or just mixing it all together, personally.
Counsel, has been a motion and a second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Duett?
No.
Councilman Slackta?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
No.
Councilman Forbes?
A weak aye.
Which one, left or right?
Oh, he said yes?
Councilwoman Karamba?
No. Is it a tie? What is it? So what happens?
No, no. No.
So three-three, you need four affirmative, so then that fails.
Then I'll make the motion to go with the alternative, 6B.
I'll second that.
Has been a motion and a second on the alternative, 6B? Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Slackta?
No.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman Duett?
Aye.
Okay. Alex?
Motion passes. And I guess continue further, whether or not you wanna consider the modern versus old Florida style, if that's where you wish to go next?
Oh, I think we absolutely should address that, counsel, don't you believe so?
Yeah.
I mean, okay, who wants to kick us off or kick it? Fred?
One question I have, you've got, on one page, you've got the old Florida style above, but then you've got another one called old Florida beach style, and then you got preferred. So you're, I'm, I'm gathering this, this one here is the one you prefer, not this one up here.
Staff presentation.
This is the staff presentation.
Oh, okay.
Could we get, I was gonna say, is that where we are, right there? Let's get it up on the.
So these were the, the modern styles that were presented, and specifically the bottom one. Jolene, if you wanna discuss.
So, your question, though, is, do you have a question between these two slides? The next two slides, or is this question?
Okay.
Not that one, and the next one.
So the purpose of this slide, Councilmember Forbes, is just to show how there is in general a old Florida beach theme already along certain segments of Benita Beach Road. And then again, just in furtherance of the Benita Beach Road Final Study Report, where we're classifying this as the beach zone. Is there an intent by city council to further this design theme by selecting the beach style versus the beach alternative, modern? And again, Sam Vincent is here, if you wanna ask him any questions.
Jackie, that other picture that you had up, those were existing proposals, or these are just concepts? What, what is that? Is that a Benita Village, is that?
Yes, the top three are existing photographs along Benita Beach Road. The bottom one is the rendering that was presented at the Benita Village MPD public hearing, which was about a year ago.
I, I think I'm in favor of continuing the old Florida style, particularly since that's in the beach zone or. I, I like the re, the rendering that they gave.
Yeah, I like that one right there.
I think that's good. Yeah, it's nice. I, I also like those, I do like that.
It just doesn't seem to fit in.
It doesn't seem to fit in.
Yeah, I agree.
I do like it, though.
But it's just not, it's not what surrounds it, I mean, I think it'd stick out a little bit.
So cool.
And then the other item that was brought up earlier by Mayor Simmons was some coordination with the Arts and Public Places Board. And if that's the case, would you wanna add it as part of this condition that they coordinate with the Arts and Public Places Board at time of a local development order for the Benita Beach Road primary facade?
I just had a question, to, to the mayor, what, what was your, I guess, intent on that?
For the architectural design?
Well, for, to get with art and public places on, are you talking?
Just, just, I mean, because of what, what I saw there, I liked, quite frankly, and I said, so, quite, if it hadn't been so close, which what I think we've, they've discussed on a couple, continuity, but yet certainly not identical, I mean, I don't, not looking for identical, but we've talked about branding, that would, that's my only consideration on that, and I thought what they proposed was, was very nice, so I was just, if it wasn't exactly maybe what we were looking for, that, that's all, that's what I was, you know, continuity, I don't, I don't think it's. John, go ahead, I see you.
The way I understood it was, we had talked about some towers as architectural features to identify the city in different locations, and what I had gathered was, if it was possible to take certain architectural characteristics from those structures and apply them in this particular building, so there's a little more consistency throughout the city. Did I understand that correctly?
Yeah, no, absolutely.
I just didn't know where you were coming from.
Yeah, no, absolutely, you know.
And it wouldn't be the entire tower, it would mainly be a couple of design characteristics that were consistent in all of those structures, is what, what I had taken away from that.
Not looking for cloning here, but not looking to do and spend the money which they're gonna spend, and we're already spending, where it could just make- to spend, and we're already spending, where it could just maybe be absolutely consistent.
Mm-hmm. At least carry some themes throughout.
Themes, thank you.
Mayor, are you looking for a more confirmation from the committee to?
The Arts and Public Places, and they had agreed to that, so they were amenable to that, so that's perfect.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all.
But I would be careful about duplicating a theme that we don't even have identified because I think that's what we have an architect for, and you have a sort of a cohesive integration of your features. And I think the idea that we have a tower there, that's just compatible. I mean, that's, I'm satisfied with that compatibility, so I wouldn't want to have, I would like to have variety, even though we have a theme. So I'd be careful there.
Alex?
If you want to talk to each other, that's fine.
Yeah, I guess the question remains, is it, is it going to be a suggestion, or is it going to raise to the level of a condition that you want us to include? And how would you want that to be included in the language? I mean, because as it stands now, it's a suggestion, whether or not you want to add that as another condition into the ordinance.
Yeah, just so they would meet with the Arts and Public Places and just discuss.
Include a condition that they at least coordinate with the Arts and Public Places Board on the architectural features of the main building?
Meant to be a very simple request, not meant to be difficult or extra stringent at all.
So Alex, they have not met, or they have met before?
I am unaware if they have, but we can condition, make the condition that I at least attend a public meeting to coordinate.
Just a clarification, hasn't Sam, are you on the Arts and Public Places? Do you, have you coordinated with the Arts and Public? No, no. Because you've, you have your input in this, in regard to the evolution of the architectural scene.
Yes, I did.
Yeah.
It fits the neighborhood down there, but remember, in architecture, we deal with a dialogue. And a dialogue is not necessarily meant to be a copy of something else, only because there are opportunities that you can have different images down there, and many cities do it in beachfront communities. So you want to be careful how far you go with the literal sense of what old Florida is, because there were many styles. Classical went to postmodern and things like that, and it expressed in other terms that dialogue with other buildings. It's a hard thing to distinguish, but I did help the architect get through this with offering this scheme here.
Because we don't want a Potemkin village here, you know? We don't want to have just artificiality imposed.
That's a good way to put it. I think that's...
That's what'd be my concern, and I'm all for having some iconic aspects to the architecture in certain areas in the city, but I don't want to have it too directive. I don't know. And I don't, and I don't object to going to the art and public places, but it would be a very soft request, in my view, and I think that's important.
Especially for a man cave, you know what I mean?
Yeah, no. No, I really think that it should be, we should allow for the creativity that's coming from the architect here, who has done a great job.
Well, that's true. You know, you've heard the term of form follows function. Well, in this particular case, it does not. These could be very expensive cars, Lamborghinis and so forth, and they are, they're current style. They are modern. They say everything about today and the future that you could say, but the building is living in the past. So you want to be careful with that, how you control use and architecture. It's a very fine line, and that's why I'm here, is to look at that for you and try to determine what a good marriage would be.
Fred?
Yeah, I, I think the Art and Public Places, their comments, when they look at this, what Art and Public Place is supposed to be like if you're doing a shopping center, or something has outside space, courtyards and all that, they're supposed to maybe convince a developer to put a statue or some piece of art. It does not, they are not into architecture. I think the only professional person actually is even involved in there that would come close to that is Sam and his one little entree with that bridge. Am I not right? Art and Public Places is for artwork?
Yes, that's correct.
And all that. That's how the clock got on the corner. I think it's a good idea. They may even see something here that could be done with what little site there is to enhance, you know, the site itself, make it more beautiful. And I think that's good.
Arts are a very difficult topic, as is color. So when you talk about the bridge project, it's really a piece of sculpture, and you have to look at it like that rather than the building. When a building becomes a piece of sculpture, it's usually one that's on open land, flat. It's a piece of artwork, and appears as a piece of sculpture, because it can stand alone. This is much different. But again, as I say, we take a look at the use and take a look at the architecture, be sure that, that the owner, the owner has a say-so in this, too. If they like modern, and they want to pursue that, that's okay, but do they show enough respect to the other buildings in the neighborhood that begin to say that you're partnering with them, and you're trying to fit in, but you're progressing, you're moving forward? So that's the way I look at it, is that, you know, are there enough things in here that say that you're part of the neighborhood? And that's what I want an architect to look at. So if he has dialogue, then he's making the attempt, and he's also trying to appease an owner. And you have to remember that, you know, owners have some desires as well. And all these people in here have fine automobiles and so forth, they, you know, may be a selling item here that, while I've overcome history to put my car in here. So again, there's a relationship here.
Counsel?
Steve.
Yes, Alex.
Steve, then Amy, sorry.
Alex, to answer your question to us, is the, how do we want it written? I think that the mayor's, is a reasonable request to go through Arts and Committee, and you know what? Nigel can tell us whether it's not within the purview. And do we have the time to do that? Is there any time restriction?
Time restriction on having them go to the Arts and Public Places Board? I don't have the Arts and Public Places Board schedule in front of me, so, and I know they generally meet monthly, but I don't know if they, you know, have missed meetings or whatever that may be. I'd have to confirm.
Well, I think it'd be probably to the owner and to the, I mean, how quick are you going to go to permit? I mean, you've still got to do permitting and all that stuff with...
Have, you know, final engineering, design development, architectural design. We're still a few months out.
Yeah, I think there would be enough. I mean, there's going to be several months in between the...
So there is time?
Right. And so, you know, you're going to be working with the Arts and Public Places Board. What does that consist of? Attending one public meeting of the board and presenting to them? Would that be sufficient?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Two quick things. First off, the next meeting that I see scheduled for Art and Public Places is September 12th. And in terms of what we would present to them, I think that we would basically be showing them a picture of what has been proposed and asking them for themes that they wish to carry over from some of the city's proposed towers into this tower. That way, we still do keep change in colors, textures and materials. The only thing maybe we keep is certain roof pitches or something that's, at least identifies it as being a similar design, but obviously not identical.
Right. Thank you. Thank you, John. Counsel?
I was just going to make sort of a side comment.
I'm sorry, Amy, yes.
No, it's really not that relevant, but we live in a Tuscany building, and our garage is filled with Lamborghinis and Rolls Royces and all that, so we have a lot of contemporary cars in our garage, and it doesn't seem to bother them. So I think going in an alternative route would be, in fact, they seem to like that kind of look, I don't know. But, so I don't think that's going to be a problem.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Amy. Counsel, anything further?
I make a motion that we move ahead with the mayor's request for the Arts and Public Places to at least take a look at it.
Okay, sure. So is there a motion to approve?
Making that motion. Yeah, motion to the old Florida style.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second. Make sure we understand it's the old Florida style.
Correct. Motion and a second. Further discussion, counsel? Roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
How about it, that? Aye. I'm first, aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman Duet?
Aye.
Councilman Slackta?
Great. Alex?
So to be sure, would you like me to state the three conditions that are coming along with approval of this ordinance?
Absolutely.
Okay. So for the record, we'll go ahead, so the ordinance's approved condition on substitution of the language submitted by the applicant as 6B, instead of that existing in the draft. There's also a condition on coordination with the Art and Public Places Board by requiring a presentation to the board at one of its public meetings regarding consistency of the buildings. And then there's a condition that is, that the so-called old Florida style architecture will be required in lieu of the modern style.
Excellent. Counsel, any comments on that? Amy? I'll start with counsel, and then, okay, actually, go ahead. Let's start with you, I'm sorry.
Just for clarification, 6C?
Yeah, Jackie just pointed that out to me. That also will need to be eliminated.
But both parties are agreeing on that, correct?
Yes, yeah.
I'll make that motion, eliminate 6C.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion to eliminate 6C and a second. Counsel, further discussion? Fred?
I thought we just accepted this.
6C.
Oh, 6C.
6 Charlie.
We're going to vote on 6D next, and 6E after that.
We're giving a 6D.
No, no, no. Thanks, everybody. So there's been a motion and a second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman Duet?
Aye.
Councilman Slackta? Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Okay, counsel?
One, I...
Fred?
I think we should add a condition that the community of development will review the condo docks and make sure that there's adequate language in there that precludes parking in aisles and blocking and all that, which speaks to Amy's concern about lots of cars and all that.
I would just suggest that maybe you make that a little more general and state that we will check the condo docks to make sure there's no internal conflicts or compatibility issues.
Right.
If that's okay with...
You want to vote on that, John?
Well, it was already mentioned before, right?
It was mentioned, but just with what we discussed, I did not hear it.
Well, there already are, there already is language in those docks that basically do require parking, that do require parking in spots, defined spots.
Right. And there's a fine for it if not.
I'm good.
Amy, you're good with that?
Are we putting that condition in for you to review the condos for internal conflicts or not?
Only if you make a motion and pass it now.
Yeah, I would like to do that with what I have in mind.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know how you do that, but I think it would be good to try to work out something.
And that's why I recommended Councilman Forbes make that a little more general and identify internal conflicts. That way, we can at least look at different, different aspects of this.
I will second that.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second for the condo docks. Alex, any further comment on the condo docks?
Nope, that can be included in the ordinance.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second, further discussion?
And it's just for internal conflict, right?
Internal, yeah, conflicts.
All right.
Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman Duet?
Aye.
Councilman Slackta? Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Alex?
We good?
I'm good, as long as you are. Any more conditions we can add?
Jacqueline? John?
Just because it is a public hearing, we do need to have public comment.
Oh, I apologize. Okay, I was going to say applicants, anything further? Okay.
Mayor, was it recommended that Jackie do give some kind of a presentation in case we have to refer to the record?
Okay, Jackie? Why don't you give a presentation of 11 seconds or less?
Well, what I can do is, I'm going to go ahead and submit my staff report packet into the record, in addition to my presentation, and that should take care of it for record purposes.
Okay, very good. Excellent point. Detail, detail. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go to public comment at this time. Members of the public that'd like to speak, please come forward.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Rick Steinmeier, this is in District 3. I go by this property every day. I spoke with the attorney in regard to the stormwater runoff, and he says that it's going to be handled with tanks underneath the building, which is something new, is supposed to work. Question, is there an onsite manager? Is there a public bathroom? Is there plumbing inside each unit? This is a condominium, you can buy it and then rent it. You can buy a unit and then rent it out, so it'd be 24 different owners. What else I got here? You could put a little sidewalk from this project into Taco Bell so they could come